...to order, loud salute to the flag. My pleasure.
My name is Mr. Fly of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We'll call the members.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Trombley, excused tonight. Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Here.
Trustee Garrick.
Here.
Now I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting.
Which one?
The regular.
Regular board meetings make motions except the meetings for minutes of the March 12th meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, motion is carried. We also have two other meetings. Here, we need to approve minutes for.
Make a motion to accept the meetings of the budget workshop minutes of March 28.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a correction to that. We stated that we would put into the policy and procedure manual specifically that Ian Baskings would receive three weeks of vacation. I think that we just need to have that as a vote but not put in the policy and procedure manual, specific employee. I don't think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
For three week vacation time. We voted on it, he's getting the three weeks vacation time, but I would just like to take out that we want it in the personnel policy and procedure manual. With that exception, I would like the minutes to be approved.
Okay, is everyone in agreement with that? Accepting, well, who do the second grade is that?
Yes, that's fine.
That?
Yeah, I think that's better.
Okay, is there any discussion?
So, we're not going to amend personnel policy, we're just going to pass, make a motion and pass it to adjust it specific plan for that.
Correct. Right, so it's not forever and ever that every, you know.
Okay.
It has his name specifically, you don't state an employee specifically in the personnel policy.
Exactly.
But that's a form of negotiation, so we did have to vote on it to approve the extended vacation, however, we just didn't want to put it in the policy and procedure manual.
I agree. Okay, so, does everybody understand the motion?
Uh huh.
Okay, are there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving minutes of the, what was that, March?
That was the March 28.
March 28.
Budget workshop.
Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Was one other, you have the other?
Make a motion to accept the meetings of the budget workshop minutes for March 14.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, motion is carried.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, we need to get everybody swin in.
That's next order of business.
Okay, at this time, we're going to suspend the rules and proceed with our organizational meeting. Juanita, could you read off the appointments?
I think you have to swear.
Why to swear?
Swear my first, yes, just following the worksheet, that's the first thing. You swear, Amy's or Kim's in here, but yourself, right, you need to be sworn in first.
Oh, okay, we should proceed with that really.
Well, yeah.
Please stand, Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pretty smart one.
Okay. State of New York, County Clinton, Village of Champlain, I, Jeffrey Moore, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor for two years, April 1st, 2007 to April 6, 2009, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
State of New York, County of Clinton, Village of Champlain, I, Greg Martin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee for two years, April 2nd, 2007 to April 6, 2009, according to the best of my ability.
True. Congratulations, Ian.
Is it official?
You want to come this way, one year, oh, yeah, easier.
Almost. Resurrection.
Be careful with the money, dude, I got expensive for me.
Got trouble with those ones.
Aye.
Yeah.
Is it official?
Yeah.
Did I pass you? Did you pass me the six, honey? You little white friend of yours.
You were, ma'am.
And then I'll let you put your gun in your bag.
Okay, clerk, the clerk will read the appointments now?
Um, it was moved by Mayor Moore that the following village offices be appointed. Dave Marshall be and is hereby appointed Village Attorney for a term of one year expiring on April 7, 2008, at the retainer set by annual budget appropriation. Juanita Munoz be and is hereby appointed Club Treasurer for a term of one year expiring on April 7, 2008, at the salary set by the annual budget appropriation. Donna Barkon be and is hereby appointed Deputy Clerk of the Village of Champlain for a term of one year, expiring on April 7, 2008, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Ian Baskings be and is hereby appointed Superintendent Public Works for a term of one year, expiring April 7, 2008, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Mike Tatro be and is hereby appointed Fire, Building, Co. and Zoning Enforcement Officer for a term of one year, expiring April 7, 2008, at the salary set by the annual budget appropriation. Juanita Munoz be here and is hereby appointed Records Access Manager for one year expiring April 7, 2008, at no salary. Scott Brothers be and is hereby appointed to the Planning Board for a term of five years, expiring April 3, 2012, at no salary. Deputy Mayor?
No, well, we had, oh, for a second there, so, somebody wants to do a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion is carried.
Deputy Mayor, Amy Garrick, Water and Sewer Commissioner, Greg Martin, Deputy Commissioner, Steve Southwick, Street Commissioner, Steve Southwick, Deputy Commissioner, Kim Trombley, Equipment Tool Commissioner, Greg Martin, Deputy Commissioner, Amy Garrick, Building Property Commissioner, Kim Trombley, Deputy Commissioner, Greg Martin, Parks Recreation Commissioner, Amy Garrick, Deputy Commissioner, Steve Southwick, Personnel Commissioner, Amy Garrick, Deputy Commissioner, Kim Trombley, harassment committee member, Greg Martin, harassment committee member, Kim Trombley, Shared Service Commissioner, Steve Southwick, Deputy Commissioner, Greg Martin, Insurance Commissioner, Greg Martin, Planning Board Liaison, Steve Southwick, Zoning Board Liaison, Kim Trombley, Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Todd Manning. Uh, there was a, the Fire District, the one down the bottom.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I had to re-pick it, excuse me.
Okay. Okay, Vice Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Clark Herdick, Chairperson of Planning Board, Jack Dawson, Vice Chairman, Chairperson of the Planning Board, Jim Infettrich, Budget Officer, Jeff Moore, Recreation Committee, Amy Garrick, Fire District Liaison, Steve Southwick.
Any discussion? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
The following board appointments. Geraldine Hayes and Marie Dupie be and are hereby appointed Inspectors of Election for a term of one year, expiring April 7, 2008, at the salary set by the annual budget appropriation, with Marie Dupie as Chairperson. Red Fillion be and is hereby appointed Village Historian for a period of one, for a term of one year, expiring April 7, 2008, at no salary. Tammy Kelsey be and is hereby appointed Village of Champlain Youth Commissioner for a term of one year, expiring April 7, 2008, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Clark Herdick be and is hereby appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term of five years, expiring April 3, 2012, at no salary. Peter Visconti appointed, Jason Borey provisional be and is hereby appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term of four years, expiring April 4, 2011.
Do we need a motion to accept these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion is carried.
The second Monday of each month be and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Village Board during the year, April 2nd, 2007 through April 7, 2008. The time be at 6:30 at Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings, and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law, and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act, also that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the Village as required by law.
Entertain a motion to that effect, so moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, motion is carried.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Um, that TV Bank North, Champlain Branch Office, Key Bank, New York, NA, Champlain Branch Office, Chase Manhattan Bank, New York, New York, Key Trust Company, Albany, New York, USDA Rural Development, Ithaca, New York, and Champlain National Bank, Champlain Branch Office be and are hereby designated the official bank depositaries of Village Funds during the year, 2000, uh, April 2nd, 2007 through April 7, 2008.
Do we entertain a motion, so moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of Village of Champlain has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services posted rate and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting of audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the saying shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize a payment in advance, the audit of claims for public utility services posted rate and excess and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the saying shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of Village of Champlain has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the Village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the Village. Now hereby it be resolved that the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of forty cents per mile. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
That the Press Republican, Plasberg, New York be and is hereby designated the official newspaper of the Village of Champlain during the year, April 2nd, 2007 through April 7, 2008.
Any motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
That the Village continue its participation in and with the joint projects of the Town of Champlain Youth Program and with the County of Clinton Comprehensive Youth Program as a member of said countywide youth organization.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
That the annual organizational meeting for organizing the Board for the 2008, 2009 official year, and for the various appointments and committees be and is hereby scheduled for April 7, 2008, at 6:30 PM at the Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Champlain, New York.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried.
The Board, keep your finger. The Board next, yes?
Mm-hmm.
The Board next reviewed the investment policy, procurement policy, personnel policy, enrollment procedures to public meeting, and they were all accepted as committed.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. At this time, we need a motion to oppose the organizational meeting.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
The organizational meeting is closed. Okay, well, we'll proceed with the regular meeting until we go to hearing at 7 o'clock. Presentation of petitions, communications, and notices from members of the community. If they want to have anything they wish to say. Okay, if not, we'll move on to the report of Mike Tatro, Coast Guard Officer.
Um, month of, excuse me, month of March, I was away for training for a week, and then recertified, so I'm in good standing with the State of New York. Just a brief note on the shared services meeting, it's been moved up to Wednesday night, I want to make sure everybody knows that.
Where is it, Mike?
At 4:45.
4:45 at?
I believe it's.
Halston Hall.
Halston, Rouse Point. One little bit of information, Mr. Barkon, the town supervisor, has informed me that he was in contact with Paul Maru, and apparently the member I had money and we had asked for it has been approved tentatively, I mean, we don't have a check or any letter or anything like that, so, like he said, they told him that the grant was approved the first time around too, so, hopefully, we're going to get that money. I've been working on junk in the Village, I've been working with the Sheriff's Department here, parcel down the street here, junk and garbage, it's unbelievable, trying to get some teeth into it here, get people in court if we can, so, trying to root, to go through the sheriff, because they have stricter guidelines than what I have to use, so, we're going through that. The Ace Hardware Store, that's coming along real good up at the mall, they're stocking their shelves, setting up their store. We have a public hearing this coming week, or the tenth?
The 11th.
The 11th. At that time, I mean, just so you're aware, the county had some concerns with the parking lot, and the lighting, and the entrance on the Route 11 and exit entrance out there, so, the people from Palmero are aware of this, hopefully, they're going to be coming back with a new plan, or a plan to address those issues, because the county was quite concerned with the visibility issues there. So if anyone wants to attend that meeting, you're more than welcome, it's going to be a public hearing for them. And my last question is, is there any information on the Don Wayne Patterson building? You want to go and check with the attorney at the last meeting?
Well, I still haven't got the definitive answer on where we're going to go from there, so.
Okay, hold off for now?
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
Oh, no, I, Shannon Moore asked if she could attend the meeting, and she had it set that we were going to have it on Thursday, so just wanted to make a note to call her and tell her that we changed that.
Yeah.
She wants to do an article on the grant.
Apparently, this just came up today, someone asked, because of the holiday that's coming up, or?
It's Holy Thursday, can't really have a meeting on a holy Thursday.
Uh, this would be one of the.
It's possible, ten days.
This was scheduled two months ago, so. I mean, as long as everybody can make it, I didn't really see an issue with it, as far as I know, everybody will be there, so. We don't have a lot on the agenda, but we've got a few things we can talk about. That's it for me.
Does anybody have any questions for the Coast enforcement officer? And if not, I'll proceed with the mayor's report. We're going to do the hydrant flushing the week of 16 April, 07 to Friday, the 20th of April, 07. So, it's just a reminder to everyone that, you know, you may be experiencing groundwater when we do the flushing during that week, be aware of that. Our pickup days are going to be May 1st and May 15th. And I want to remind everybody that there's a job fair that's put on by the Chamber of Commerce, the 10th of May at the Comfort Inn in Plasberg, if anybody is interested in that. I know those things are a good way to contact potential employers and, and employers to find workers, so, if you are interested in that, that's a good thing to go to. And that's all I have. Justin, are there any questions on the report? If there's not, Justin Martin?
Quick report tonight. First, I'd like to welcome Ian, Superintendent Public Works, welcome to the Village.
Thank you.
Secondly, I'd like to thank Woody for his service as superintendent, and wish him well. Looking forward to this shared services meeting tomorrow, we have some information from Fred Tested that we'll have to go over. And other than that, I guess that's all that I can discuss, I guess, talk about. Report.
They're too busy there.
What am I doing over here?
Whatever it is, what we're here for. I'll mind myself tonight.
Okay, Justice Southwick?
I'm going to make mine short, too. Congratulations, Ian, welcome aboard. Congratulations, Woody. I'm sure you're going to be glad to be where you are. It's a good fit for you. Looking forward to working with you on the water sewer stuff. The only thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm not sure whether to bring it up in our new business at this time, is a discussion on the repairs of the truck. I went down to M.A. Jerry's.
You can bring it up for any business.
Okay. Then that's all, I'm all set.
Okay, any questions for Trustee Southwick? Not, Justice Garrick?
Uh, same thing, I was welcome, and thank you so much, Woody, for everything you did in this past year, we do appreciate stepping up and holding on as long as you did, so thank you very much. Have made several phone calls on the picnic tables, have not gotten any return phone calls. So, we'll be doing another round again this week, and I've done it the past two weeks and no responses, so I don't know whether people are still, the woodworkers are still down in Florida most likely, and haven't made it back up to the area, is what I'm assuming. So, and I will get with Ian to see if it's something that the staff could do, so I was thinking that we would get that new lumber, which is the weatherproof, life-lasting, good stuff, and the specs are so specific, I can't imagine that we couldn't put together, I couldn't tailor ourselves. So, that's all I have.
Any questions for Trustee Garrick? Okay, if not, we'll proceed with the report from the Club Treasurer.
Everybody's been copied with the revenue and expense report.
Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to.
Yeah, we, you got a little sec?
We have water and sewer billing that she didn't, she's got to get the amounts for it, hold on.
We did a water and a sewer billing, the total for water was fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents, and the sewer was seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine, seventy-six.
Stay right here. Woody, as a matter of fact, you'll be sliding over your.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Are you prepared to act on the warrant at this time? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a question with the excavator rental. Speak faster. Are we able to get any kind of reimbursement, Woody, do you know?
Nothing was declared a disaster area by the state at this point.
Yeah, it was declared by the state.
We still have to total up the damages on the street, see if we come up with a dollar figure amount. For the repairs. And I'm waiting from Doug, well, I'm kind of preempting the report, but Doug Ferris has been up to look at the bridge, he is going to come up with a plan and figures for the repair and replacement, or both, of the pipe down the bridge.
In the sewage, where are we at with the hauling of that? What percentage done with this $7,000 bill?
We're about two-thirds of the way.
On a side note, on the excavator, the emergency services meeting, and I'll say this from the standpoint of our company, it would be nice for us to put together a list of available equipment that the Village could use in a situation like that, and kind of have like an on-call list, where if you get in a pickle like that, you could call us and we could provide a backhoe and an operator in an emergency situation like that.
You know, we needed more than a backhoe that time.
Well, I'm just saying, there are, there are front-end motors that are out there too, and I think if we put together a decent pitch to the local businesses, that they might step up and, and offer the same thing that I'm offering to the Village, and stay away from these kind of expenses in an emergency situation like that.
More of a grant type, community service?
Community service, sure.
Grant was the wrong word, but.
Yeah.
On another note.
There's a lot of, one more just follow-up, is that all the independent telephone companies have a network, where we all know what every company has for equipment, and when, like during the ice storm, we, it was at our disposal, I mean, the companies still have to agree to actually send the personnel and the equipment, but we had a whole list of disaster recovery equipment that was available to us, and I think we should have the same thing. I mean, what would be wrong with the town, or the town wars, assuming we would have the same type of agreement with, and again, a shared service type thing.
The Clinton County Emergency Services is working with Shazee right now to establish an emergency response plan for the Town of Shazee, and they're going to try to use that as a model, they've utilized most of the local Shazee businesses for their emergency response plan, and once that's finalized, the Village here could take a look at that and see if they could adapt it for their process. Most of the legwork will be done of just contacting the local businesses.
No, if that was, I don't know, and the, it was the Clinton Community, or, yeah, Clinton County, you said, right? So I'll say for now, if Clinton County is providing, would that be free, I'm looking at?
That's the idea behind it.
Right, so it would be a low cost?
Low cost, or minimal cost, or free.
Ideally, we wouldn't see this $2,700 bill on there for the rental of an excavator operator.
This is for old Ford?
No, that's just two.
That's just two, so we're going to get another bill from?
But we haven't gotten one yet, from what from? This is for your.
Pretty sure we will.
So, is there something you're willing to look into, Steve?
I'll work, I'll work with you on that, because I've got good contacts with, and I'll get Ian involved with emergency services.
I called Selene today, but she's out of the office till Wednesday.
Okay, I guess at this time, I'm going to put the regular meeting in recess, and we'll move to the budget hearing. I guess I would ask at this time, does anybody have any public comment?
Make a motion to accept the budget for the Village for the year 2007, 2008, as written.
A second, Tom.
A second. Any discussion? Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Okay, just, two letters. Okay, just to let everyone know what that involves. It involves an increase in the, I don't know, the rate per cess thousand from four fifty-four to four eighty-one. It involves a nine percent raise in water rates, and a five percent raise in the service charge for water, and a three percent?
No, six percent.
Six.
In the service charge.
On the service charge, and three percent on the wastewater charge. I would just like to state at this time that I want to thank everybody on board that worked on this. Even though the cost of living went up almost three percent, the general budget only increased half of one percent, the water budget only went up three tenths of one percent, and wastewater only eight tenths of one percent. Where we have the shortfall, and we would need to down to make these, the water and wastewater funds self-sufficient, so we really don't have a lot of wiggle room there. We held the budgets as low as possible. Unfortunately, we had a significant decrease in the amount of water used, in the amount of wastewater treated, so the bill had to go up. We cannot, we cannot run it in deficit on that, we cannot take it out of the general fund, so that is where we ended up. So again, I want to thank everybody for working so hard on this. We really did our best to keep that budget down. Thanks. Okay, that being said, I'll call the regular meeting back to order. And I think we left off with the presentation of the warrant, did we?
Yeah. Make a motion, a second, and a decision. Get that off the track.
We've done, sorry, I talked about the excavator.
I think, I think you had made a motion.
Amy, that's a good, Amy, Amy.
Okay, we can discuss the warrant, which was, I guess, what we were doing. Okay. Is there any further, yeah, go ahead.
I just got to say that we, I know we left off, I think, with Selene was out.
Is out, yes, Selene was out on the job.
Yeah, we're going to continue to pursue any funding that's available there, and... And on the suggestion of our attorney, we are going to put in a notice to the town of Danamora about, that we may or may not pursue something there, but we need to go file something, so we're going to do that. You have to file with the ninety-eight if you have any issue with the, with one. So anyway, let's, but anyway, back to the warrant. Okay, any further discussion on the warrant? Okay, Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, well, now the superintendent report, I think this will kind of be a little bit of a dual report at this time.
I think we just touched on a lot of things. We're still cleaning up from the flood of the fifteenth and sixteenth, and they've started sweeping streets as weather permits. The damper, the better, to sweep the streets. It's healthier for the guys. We have the truck repair that we're going to bring up under new business. And I'd like to welcome Ian on board.
Thank you.
I think it'll be a real good relationship.
Yep, if you don't mind, I'd like to say thank you to the trustees and the mayor. I appreciate your time and your patience for working, spending a few months for this to happen. I mentioned once before, Steve, you weren't here, but I wanted a family, and I think I found it. So it'll all grow well here. Woody, it's been a good day so far, and we look forward in the future. You're going to be my backhoe for quite a while, and you set a good relationship, and I think we'll do fine here. Got a lot of work ahead of me, and it seems like it's going to be really interesting, working out new community services for emergencies and stuff like that. I think it'll all be a challenge at times, for sure, but in the end, we'll all feel better about staying in the positions that we're at, so. That's really all I got. Or the warrant, we bought ice. You got plenty in the street. That's all.
Thanks. Are there any questions on the superintendent report? Anyway, no, no, you didn't watch the first time out.
Bring it on. I'll get back to you, thanks.
Perfect answer.
I'll just ask you anything.
Okay, well, we'll put a read, the court of law.
Mayor Moore?
We have.
Can I ask you a question? You had purchase requirements, requisitions, you?
Okay, I was on the, well, the, before it was updated.
Before the update, okay, I did put it in your box, I think.
So I'll catch it on new business. Is there anything else I missed there?
I don't think so. No, just the purchase request. Under new business was the mimer that you asked me to add, and I think that was it, I believe.
Okay. Put purchase recs in there, okay, yep. Thanks.
Yep. Correspondence?
Yes.
Correspondence from Greg Fleming regarding Horizon Heights pending matters with the village. Correspondence from Greg Fleming regarding a letter to Mr. Marshall, village attorney. Correspondence from Champlain Catholic Men's Club, KFC, regarding renewal of their alcoholic beverage retail license. Correspondence from Don Wayne Patterson regarding his property located eleven eighty-one, Route nine, affected by the flood on March fifteenth, two thousand and seven. Correspondence from FEMA regarding flood plain management.
Okay. Under old business, we have a time-worn cable franchise. Don't think there's anything new on that. There's nothing new on a Cherry Street issue. Nothing new with native vests. Nothing new with the GSA meter. So there's nothing to be acted upon. There's old business, there's new business, and a couple items. We have a resignation from Willie Kissel, from the superintendent job, effective today. I would accept a motion to accept his resignation.
So moved. Good, thanks.
Second?
Second, but thanks.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Woody.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, Woody. Good run. Okay, the other new business we have, a Niner Conference coming up. That's right here. It's managing recreational liability claims and litigation. It's a morning session Tuesday, May first. I would like to send a couple people there. It's in Plasberg. I think this is something in view of the increase in parkway that we have and whatnot. We really should know what's out there for liability. So it would entertain a motion to send two people.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. And any purchase orders, which I missed? I'll read them all. You want to do that now?
No. Whenever, just so I don't forget. Thanks, and thank you.
I'll just read these all as one, for one motion, and then we can discuss them, if there's a problem with any of them. The first is for Core Pro Sampler at ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents. A Flowjet Pump at two hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. And a Moynhoop Pump at fourteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars plus three. Do you entertain a motion to accept these purchase orders?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, discussion?
Okay, I'll ask a question. Woody, did we just buy a Minot Pump?
We didn't buy one yet. I just received a quote on the, on the Moynhoop Pump.
But we didn't buy one.
We didn't buy it.
Didn't, did we just buy a pump?
We bought a pump last year.
Okay. And we only have one quote, aren't we supposed to have three quotes?
This is a specific item.
But no one else makes it?
No.
Only one person?
The only one that fits in the slot in the system.
And what is this for?
Sledge production.
We're not producing no sledge already?
If my pump goes down, I have nothing to replace it with, and then I end up with a lead strip pad. It's going to be a backup.
It's a sledge pump, Woody?
Sledge pump, it's a progressive cavity sledge pump.
And if we upgrade our facility, this would be obsolete, or is this something that's going to be usable?
We possibly could use it with the new system, or it could be sold with the current system that we're going to stick to somebody.
No news on that? On the Title IX stuff?
Round nine.
Round nine, excuse me. We passed the budget, maybe we'll hear something. Okay, is there any further discussion? Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. We have, I guess I'll let you handle this, you have some information for us.
Yes, I have a report. I was in Plasberg today and took that, took an opportunity to stop by M. H. Jerry's and look at what's going on with our plow truck. I met with the service manager. He outlined specifically what went wrong and how it went wrong, and then we went back and looked at the truck, and the guy that was working on it was there as well. They were very accommodating, by the way. The bottom line is that there was a spring that failed, irrespective of the springs that we replaced. We replaced the overload springs, and the springs that broke were the actual main springs down at the bottom where they attach to the axle. So when that bottom spring let go, the whole rear end twisted and caused all this damage. My question to him was, was this preventable? And he said yes. And he also said that in looking at the truck itself, he questioned some of the maintenance routines that were performed on it. Specifically, the brake pads were all compromised because of the fluid on them, so as part of the repairs, you're going to have to replace all the brake pads as well. I further asked him, if we were to perform these repairs, what would be our potential life expectancy of this truck beyond the initial repair? And he said, if we were to follow a little bit more stringent maintenance routine, he sees two, three years of use with that truck. Assuming anything that he doesn't see, maybe what he's looked at, doesn't fail, if you call me on that. So then I went and I sat with the sales department, and I asked them what a good cost for a new truck of comparable...
Capabilities.
Capabilities, straight capacity, there you go. And it was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And that was an estimate. And she said that could go eight thousand dollars either way, because there's new emission standards being placed on these types of vehicles that will require this whole new exhaust system to control the amount of emissions. So it could go eight thousand dollars higher, it could be a little bit less than that, so I didn't want to hold her to anything, because I was just looking for a number to bring back to us to talk about. The service manager's recommendation was that we repair the truck, because I'm looking at the whole thing, and what we have invested in, and I told him we had about ten thousand dollars in it. And he said even if we put another seven in it, seventeen thousand dollars, however he buys you a new sander of the type that we have in that truck. Right or wrong, I think he's pretty close, we're in aluminum sander like that. So my recommendation is to repair it for two reasons. One, it's already down there, and it's all torn apart, and he's already started repairing it. So I don't know what they're going to charge us to get to the point where we can even get it out of there. The axle's off of it, the loose springs have started being mounted on it. It's in the middle of the repair. That's a huge factor to consider. I don't know what they're going to charge us, you know, to try to get it out of there. Like I said, the rear end is completely out of it, it's sitting on the frame, on jackstands, and it's in the process of being repaired.
So what you're saying, Steve, would require a certain amount of repair just to get it off the site?
Yeah, he's already got the springs mounted on it on both sides. And what happened as well, and I wish I was a little bit more technical, is there's a certain, a couple of pieces that hold the rear end to the frame that have to be replaced. Because I asked him, well, how do we get from, you know, fifty-five-hundred to over seven thousand dollars? Because when they first looked at it, they didn't notice that these things were shot as well.
Snapped right off.
They snapped it right off. What holds the springs to the actual rear end. So if anybody has questions?
To that effect?
I'd like to make a motion that we repair the truck and hope that we can get two years out of it, and start putting aside money for, you know, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar truck, which is probably going to be a hundred and forty-seven thousand in three years. It's really similar, I think, to the one that Ross's Point has now. Have you seen that one with the multipurpose box on it? It does sanding and other types of work at the same time. Combo bodies, what we call it. Does anybody have any questions, and me about?
Well, did you get a second for?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I don't know if this is the appropriate place or forum here, but I have some questions about procedural, the procedural aspect of this, whether the, whether the chain of command, if I can use that, was followed? Why the truck is even there? Why it was not brought back here first? And I think there are some issues, and maybe we'll have to have a meeting on this, equipment meeting on this later, as to what happened to this truck. I don't think we can let that go by the wayside. This is a very serious expense. I, from talking to people, it almost seems like it was a preventable expense, and I guess they have some procedural type aspects, why the chain of command, so to speak, was not followed on this one.
I called M. H. Jerry's and had to have it towed there. The damage appeared to be more than we could handle in our own garage for the repairs.
That helps, thank you.
I could add something, too, Greg. I asked him if the damage was any result of overloading the sander, overloading the truck itself, and he said there's no way that that truck was built to be able to handle anything that could be put in that truck. Because I know there's times where I've seen that thing loaded down with sand, salt combination, that it looked like it was falling off before it had a chance to be spread. And he said there's no way that that truck would not handle anything that you could put in that sander, right? Because it's not, it's not the full size of the box you're talking about, which, you know, in the sander itself. So that wasn't a part of what caused it to fail. There was some questioning in his mind as to whether there was a, if it was preventable or not. He wouldn't say yes, and he wouldn't say no.
I just think that that would be important to understand, because we, our equipment here in this village is limited and obviously very important to what our mission is.
Well, the thing that he did say is that as soon as that started with some noise inside the cab, the truck should have stopped at that point. And I was told that it would still continue to be used after the first initial starting to hear funky noises. It's unlikely we're going to...
Sounds of a problem?
Yes.
Did it affect the drive training, though? Did it affect the drive train at all?
No, luckily the.
Thinking the axle twisted.
No, luckily the, the.
Pulled the drive shaft.
The drive shaft pulled right out of the transfer case, it just dropped down, and didn't, didn't hurt anything from the rear end forward, luckily. That's what I asked first thing, 'cause, you know, that's what I was thinking, when you compromise the rear axle and turn the drive shaft, you could mess up the transfer cases and transactions and everything, and he said, no, it just, it just pulled out, and then it dropped down.
What year is the truck?
It's an eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Okay, so we're almost at its twenty-year limit?
That's a thing to consider. Just to give you some history, we bought that from the village of Ross's Point, they bought a brand-new truck, I think it had like thirty, something like a thousand miles on it, it was a state highway spec truck. Ross's Point gets all the good stuff, so we decided that we would try to make that work because of how well-built it was for its time.
They were also, it was the truck and the stainless steel sander.
Right.
The stainless steel sanders are about eight to nine thousand dollars right now.
And we paid ten for the whole set, so.
So you, you bought a sander, the truck came with it?
Yeah.
Essentially.
That's a good point.
So now you're paying seven thousand dollars to get a truck?
Yes.
Basically.
Um.
You guys already got it all figured out, but is it, is it rusted really bad? I'm thinking salt, I don't know, I have never seen.
We've sand, we sandblasted the frame and painted the frame.
And the box.
Two years ago, repainted the box, put it in bed.
Oh, I don't know, you know how it gets. Yep.
Up here, cars rot out.
You haven't had a chance to see that truck yet. Yeah, I mean, that, that would be worth a road trip to go and see it yourself, if you don't mind me saying so, so you can get a feel for what we discussed.
Well, you drive by in the morning, drive by.
Yeah.
They're probably not open, so, I'm sorry, go.
Okay, any further discussion? Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gere?
I know, I know. Aye.
Aye. Mayor Moore, aye.
I understand.
Motion is carried? Don't make a motion to the judge, is there any other business?
I'll make a motion, a motion to the judge at this time.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is, there.
You know, what, she's done.
I didn't like that one very much, but I don't know what else to do, Brad.